... meeting for Tuesday, April 6, 2021. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
Would we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. It's starting to feel a little bit more normal. Thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Rogers.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
I entertain a motion for approval of meeting minutes for March 2, 2021. So moved?
Second.
Kevin? Who's second?
Lou.
You get that, Dan?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda are comments and suggestions from the citizens. So again, if you have a comment or suggestion, please fill out a little blue card. You can still do that, and they'll bring it up to us. What we try to do is limit the comments to about three minutes. Normally, we have a clock going. I would be respectful and not run the clock because we only have two comments, but if you could try to be to the point and brief, we would really appreciate it. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and your address before you start to share your comments and concerns with the council. Again, thank you all for coming. First up is Lisa Connolly. Yes, that's fine.
Can talk better. Thank you. And thank you for your attention to the mayor and the council of Oconomowoc. I live in the village of Lachla Bell at 516-
I'm going to try to have you speak right into the microphone. You can push it down, too. There you go.
I live in the village of Lachla Bell at 516 Lachla Bell Drive, but I'm certainly a member of this greater community, and we do pay taxes in the city. I'm here because I love the lakes that we live here and with, and because I see the existing legislative districting process as a real threat to the health of those lakes. I helped chair the Lachla Bell Management District for a number of years, and I've been involved in lake quality issues for over 30 years. And I'm worried because since our legislative districts were redrawn in 2012, the shoreline zoning standards, farm buffer strips, and other protections for our lakes have been weakened without any opportunity for public comment as part of the state budgets. In fact, since the gerrymander of 180 different laws and unfunded mandates have taken power from cities like Oconomowoc and from our villages, towns, and the county. Before 2012, you could create your own wards based on your community concerns in important areas. Then the legislature would use those wards to build the state district maps. In 2012, the process was turned on its head, and an expert from Oklahoma developed computer-generated maps in secret based on partisan voting records, not on your community's interest. Now, the city of Oconomowoc will be required to redraw your wards to match the computer-generated, regardless of your own community interests or desires. The result of the district maps, and you have a picture on your end of the letter I wrote, you can see what happened to the city of Jefferson. Similar stuff happened to Sussex, to Fort Atkinson. It's all cut up. This could easily happen in Oconomowoc. And while my village and the city of Oconomowoc are still in one legislative district, our 38th Assembly District now cuts us both away from half of Okachi Lake and all the rest of the lakes in Lake Country of Waukesha County, which now is represented by three different Assembly and two Senate districts. It would make total sense to redraw our Assembly District lines to reflect a united voice for what is best for Lake Country communities. Instead, our 38th Assembly District goes as far west as Marshall and Deerfield, but ignores Watertown and Exonia, which is part of our school district, instead of connecting us to the other economies and the waters that make our Lake Country so very special. So here's how you can help. Oconomowoc could join the 60 communities in Wisconsin in favor of a nonpartisan mapping process. The Wisconsin Legislative Reference Bureau is a highly respected nonpartisan body that could easily draw these maps for Wisconsin. You could ask the legislature and the Hubel's Maps Commission, they'll both be coming up with maps, to unite Waukesha Lake Country in one legislative district. Having one representative and one senator for our area would certainly give us a stronger collective voice at the state level. If the legislature still wants to protect their existing gerrymandered districts, the governor can veto the maps they create, and the process then goes to court, and we're all going to pay for those court costs. I think it was over $4 million the last time around. I brought some background information for each of you on this issue, and thank you so much for your attention. I'd be glad to come to a future meeting and address this further or answer more questions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think there are a number of people here tonight who do not wish to speak but support. And I'd just like you to stand up so people can, the council can see. You're being saved, all of those speeches. And I am going to run past three minutes, but I'm the one who made the rule in the first I am here seconding Lisa Connolly's motion, really, in effect. When legislators, Democrats or Republicans, redistrict, they gerrymander to create safe districts for their party. In the 2020 election, only 64 of 435 congressional districts were considered competitive. None of them were in Wisconsin. The Harvard Electoral Integrity Report rated the fairness of Wisconsin's present districts a three on a scale of 100. It was not only the lowest rating in the nation, it was the lowest rating they have ever given. Our redistricting plans invariably end up in court, costing taxpayers millions of dollars in legal fees. Consequently, polling shows that 72% of Wisconsinites want an independent body to redistrict: 83% of the Democrats, 76% of independents, and 63% of Republicans. We have seen the impact of safe districts in increased governmental polarization and gridlock. Contest in safe districts are in the primaries, not in the general elections. Because the more committed partisans dominate the primaries, moderates, independents, and minority party voters are ignored. After the election, even the voters who supported the major party, the majority party, are In Wisconsin, the Marquette Polls show 60, 70, 80% support of numerous issues that go nowhere in the legislature. How is that possible in a representative democracy? Well, elected officials know that it is the donors and the party leaders who have the power to reward or punish, not the voters. In safe districts, constituents can be ignored with impunity. I will give you a local, for instance. In my day in office, when dinosaurs rolled planes, cellphones did not exist. When I called a legislator, he came off the Senate or Assembly floor to answer the phone. The legislators did not do this because they were so fond of me, but because they recognized the voting power of Oconomowoc residents. Fast forward to today's safe districts. Oconomowoc needed a slight tweak in the state law in order to transfer excess TIF funds from the PAP's TIF to the downtown TIF. The transfer is permitted if all the underlying districts are identical, but in this case, part of the downtown TIF was in a different Lake District. Removing Lake Districts from the calculations would have resolved the issue. Lake Districts generate minuscule revenue, and the TIF law has been extensively altered in more significant ways, so this should have been easily done. But Oconomowoc could not get in touch with its Assemblyman to introduce the bill. Finally, it hired a spokesman to pursue the matter. The idea of the city having to hire someone to speak to and lobby the city's own representative would have been unthinkable in my time. Our mayor was no neophyte. He had worked in a Republican congressman's office prior to being mayor, and he had served as a Republican governor, and he served in a Republican governor's administration after his mayoral services. Yet our Republican Assemblyman left him, our lobbyist, and the city cooling our heels. Oconomowoc solved the problem by removing properties that were in the different Lake District from the downtown TIF to make the transfer of PAP's TIF revenues possible, but thus lost the TIF revenues from the excluded portion of the district. We could have had both, had the law been changed. So much for representation in a safe district. Will an independent redistricting body create more competitive districts? Experience in other states says yes. Will it change the partisan makeup of governmental bodies? In some places, perhaps. It is unlikely that Oconomowoc will change party loyalties, but there is evidence that candidates from competitive districts are more moderate and more responsive to their constituents. If you don't think it's appropriate for municipal officials to tell legislators what they ought to do, Lisa Connolly reminded me that there were, since the redistricting, the latest redistricting, there have been 180 measures that the state legislature has passed that limited or eliminated the powers of local government. When I wrote a column four years ago about diminishing local control, there were 110. And I remind you that last year, they didn't even hardly meet, so you should count your blessings, or you would have probably lost more than 180 in total, probably would have been more. It seems the legislature has no intention of ceasing its efforts to marginalize local governments. It is not too much for a local government, and many have already in the state, both municipalities and counties, to ask the legislature to give up one power for the sake of good government. Fair representation is essential to functional democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments from the public? I don't have any more blue cards, I just have the two. Thank you for the heads up that it would go a little bit longer, because I did have my timer on, if you'd like to know how much.
I haven't been here for a year.
Okay, thank you very much. With no further public comment, we will move on. Let's move on to number six, consent agenda items. I entertain a motion for consent agenda items A and B. So moved? Kevin?
Second.
Second, Zaffle. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Moving on to committee reports. Number A, Finance. Consider Act on Adopting the City of Oconomowoc Revised Procurement Policy. That has been moved and will be tabled by a committee for two weeks from today, so that has been removed from the agenda. Next item up is Protection and Welfare. Consider Act on Resolution 21-R2941, granting a new 2021 Class B intoxicating liquor-fermented malt beverage license to the et cetera Bar and Grill LLC. I'd like to entertain a motion. So moved?
Mulder, second.
That's Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
On to-
Want to vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
All right, on to Public Services. Consider Act Resolution 21-R2940, declaring authorized representation to request grant funding for the Urban Nonprofits Source Construction Grant. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, sir. Boy, it's like deja vu. It's like I just heard this thing. But item before you tonight is a precursor for us submitting for a grant. The grant we'd be looking for is for a water quality pond that we're looking to potentially construct in 2024 in the Armour Road area to help the water quality in that area. The resolution allows us to submit for that grant, and the DNR does require that because they want to make sure that, should they award a grant to the city of Oconomowoc, that we would move forward with the project. Project right now is in our long-term finance plan in the year 2024 with a estimated cost of $560,000, so the grant we'd be requesting would be the maximum $150,000 grant for that. So I'm here to answer any questions, but, you know, just look for approval of the resolution to allow us to submit for the grant.
Entertain a motion. Alderman Kavieski?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So I support this initiative and this move to submit for the grant. We have found some difficulty in other positions with grant money completing costs to a project. The underpass at 67 is one example. Right now, the budget for that pond is, as you mentioned, a little over half a million dollars with a $150,000 grant application to help the city costs associated with that. Do you have any sense of, I know there's a crystal ball question here, if today's $500,000-plus budget for this project could be a $700 or more $1,000 budget by the time this grant rolls around? And any advice or suggestions in regards to the prioritization of this particular project, if that were the case, and we submit for the grant now, and what the ramifications of that could be? Does that make sense?
You're referring to just the pond, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So the grant, you know, we're looking for now, this is the same grant amount that's been available when we did their Forest Street Pond a few years ago, same $150,000. So we would just have to watch it budget-wise as we move forward to see where the costs are coming in. So we could bring it in and find out that, yes, it has gone up in cost, but I don't anticipate, you know, unless there's something there that we don't know about yet, you know, anything to drive that cost. We've, when you look at our estimated costs, that had been included in the 2016 study that earmarked this and a couple of other ponds, those numbers have come out fairly close, so, yeah, so, thanks.
Attorney Riffle?
No. You done? I mean, are we done?
I don't know.
We're kind of a little bit off the topic here, in that this is only allowing for staff to apply for grants, not getting into the specific grants that we're dealing with, but it's cool.
Thanks.
Like to entertain a motion. So moved? Ellis?
Second, Zappel.
Any further discussions or questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
On to Utilities. Mr. Pickard. First up is Consider Act on Application to Adjust Green Power Tariff. Or John's going to present? Great. Mr. Shu.
All right, so this is the first of two minor adjustments that we're requesting to have permission to apply to the Public Service Commission to make adjustments to our electric utility rates. So the first one is related to what we call our green power blocks. We purchase power from WPPI that has a mixture of energy resources, and, you know, some of them are conventional, some of them are renewable, and currently, still renewable and resources are still more expensive than conventional resources. So one thing that we do is we offer customers the opportunity to buy what we call a green power block, and then what we do with that revenue is we, that's a pass-through for our utility, that revenue is given to WPPI, and then they increase the quantity of renewable resources that they purchase. We sell these blocks in units of 300 kilowatt-hours each for $3 is the current price, you know, and we've been offering these for about, like, 12 years. Since then, the price of renewable energy has decreased significantly. So what we're doing is, you know, at WPPI's request, is basically, we're wanting to adjust the price of this block of renewable energy that we offer to our customers from, like, $3 each to $2 each. And then also, there's like a volume discount if you buy, you know, more of them as well. So anyway, that's the, that's the first of the two items for you.
Yeah, if you want to go through the second one as well, and then we'll come back to vote.
Sure. So the second one is, we have a program, an economic incentive rate in our tariff. It's called the New Market, New Low Market Pricing Tariff, and this is something that, it's something that's available to a large new customer who either is new to the community or would significantly expand their usage. And it's something, if they qualify for, they can receive approximately about a 30% reduction in their electric rates. This would be something directly between them and our power supplier, WPPI. It wouldn't really have any direct financial impact on us. So what we're trying to do is make some adjustments that make this incentive rate more attainable for more customers, because currently, like statewide, there's only about, like, four customers that qualify for it. None are in Oconomowoc, so it's just some adjustments that make it more attainable.
Any questions for John? Alderman, all. Mulder.
On the green power, John, I know we talked about this at committee, is, and I just heard you say, I think, that WPPI is requesting that we make this change, or we have to, we have to request that they make the change?
They, so like, WPPI assists us with our, like, tariffs, but the tariff that we charge our customers is directly between us and our customers.
Right, but does WPPI want us to lower it?
They, yes, they would like to, yes.
Any further question? Alderman Kavieski.
So the process, again, just for clarity and for the public to understand, is that the city of Oconomowoc Public Utility purchases power from WPPI. There's a tariff rate in place. In order to enact an adjustment in that tariff, we consult with WPPI on a fairly regular basis. They've suggested that maybe we address this tariff. The way that that then gets initiated is an official request from us as their customer to make that adjustment on the tariff, and that triggers the next steps in place. Without us doing this, it doesn't get addressed, and without that consultation and the request from them, there's a two-way communication there.
Yes, that's correct.
I'd like to entertain a motion for number one, Consider Act on the Application to Adjust Green Power Tariff. So moved, Zappel?
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Alderman Mulder.
Yeah, so I was, I'm against this, and the way I'm viewing it is that we have residents that are volunteering to make a contribution towards additional green power, and it's, I think of it like when you go to the Piggly Wiggly and they say, "Do you want to give a dollar towards St. Jude's?" or something like that. And we're now going to reduce the amount that those people are going to be contributing. They're willingly contributing $3 a month, and now we're going to have them only contribute $2 a month because we're more efficient in creating green power. But those people, that's a good thing. Their $3 now goes further than it did before. So I think we're, I think what's hap, the $3 that they've been contributing over the years is doing exactly what they wanted it to do, which is to create more efficient green power. So to remove a dollar, they're already willingly doing it. Why, why reduce it? I don't, I don't understand this. It seems like we have the opportunity to continue to build on the goodwill that this has been doing over time, and I don't know that, I don't know that our customers are asking us to do that.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I was going to ask if John or Joe could speak to this.
Sure, and so, like, you, as a regulated entity, you know, the utilities, we sell, like, products and services, so the product that we're, I mean, overall, we're all in favor of if customers are wanting to, like, support and fund renewable energy, and that, we would think that's a good thing. The, you, we sell, like, our tariff, we sell units of measurements, like, you know, kilowatts of energy, gallons of water, and so in our tariffs, the specific thing that we're selling right now is a block of energy that's the equivalent of 300 kilowatts, and that's priced at $3. So essentially, right now, we're, because renewable energy has decreased, we're essentially overcharging our customers for that specific product that we're offering our customers. If this passes, we definitely plan on, like, heavily promoting and saying, hey, renewable energy is more affordable, you know, you can certainly, like, you, it's an opportunity for more customers to participate, and more people can hopefully participate in the program. But it's not really, it's not really our money to, like, fund or decide with, it's just, you know, it's just basically dealing with the unit of measurement at which we're offering this to our customers that we're wanting to make an adjustment to.
Alderman Kavieski.
So I see two benefits to this, lowering the cost of entry to participation. While a dollar may not be significant, it is still lowering the cost of entry to participate and encouraging the incorporation of the green energy. The other benefit to that is, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is no cap in how many blocks of green power I may purchase as an, as a way to incentivize that, that green energy mix.
Correct.
So now where I may want to do $3, I may want to do 4.
Sure.
And buy two blocks as opposed to one block. So while we are lowering the cost of entry and incentivizing participation, we're also potentially increasing the number of blocks that may be purchased because we're lowering the cost, and those are free-market principles that are at play.
Yes, that's correct. And one of the things we can do as part of our marketing efforts, if this passes, is, like, reach out to those. Right now, we have about 150 residential customers participating in the program, and we could even reach out to them specifically and say, hey, you know, the price that we're charging, $3 each, is going to be dropping to $2 each. If you want to, you know, pay the same amount, you can buy more, you know, we can have that be part of that promotional effort.
That's what increases the amount of renewables. It's not the actual money, it's how many blocks you purchase. There's another really important point-
Okay.
-that John didn't touch on is, this was brought before the WPPI Board of Directors, 51 members, they all voted to reduce it from $3 to do $2, because the cost to WPPI reduced by, pretty much, all municipality-wise of members of WPPI have agreed to do this.
Thank you.
Question, do most residents buy more than one block?
It's a mixture. I'd say of those 153 customers, they're buying, like, 281 of these blocks, so most of them are one, some might, we might have one that jumps up to five, but it's usually one or two.
Okay, thanks.
An average cus, so like, you, one block is like 300 kilowatt-hours, and average residential house uses maybe like 700 kilowatts a month, so you, two and a half blocks would cover, you know, a house.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Next up, Consider Act on Application to Adjust NLP Tariff. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, Kavieski.
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Thank you. On to new business, Consider Act on Developers Agreement for Lake Country Village Edition 5. Mr. Fry.
Brought my mask and on my glasses, so hopefully I memorize this. Oh, and wear a lock, because I did. This- This developers agreement for you tonight is for Lake Country Village, which is a development going on in the Village of Summit. This is their fifth addition to that project. It started in 2017 with 305 single-family housing lots. This developers agreement tonight's for the final 50, so they have done very well. There's, the only difference in this agreement tonight compared to the ones that have come before you is that the earlier versions had a water main looping requirement in there. But since this now completes all the phases, that wording is not in here. But it's a, it's only needed because they're putting in sanitary sewer and water, which will remain under the ownership of the city. So we do a developers agreement for that.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
They'll move to Ellis.
Second, Zappel.
Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Fry?
Thank you.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Next item, consider act on ordinance 21 dash 01006 to amend 1.402 of the City of Oconomock Municipal Code relating Board of Review. Ms. Conan.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in February of this year, our legislators changed the law regarding the training requirements for Board of Review members. Previous, the Board of Review members were to go through a training certification every two years. Now what they have, are requiring effective January 1st of 2022 is that the Board of Review members, one member must be certified each year. And so to bring our code into compliance, and obviously it'll be effective next year, but it's not more of a housekeeping item. I'm recommending adopting this ordinance. If you wish to waive the second reading, you know, that, that's fine. It again will be effective January 1 of 2022, but then I can get everything in place and we're all set to go and things run smoothly. And then the language, instead of detailing that out in the ordinance, I am just referring to the state statute because if they decide to change it again, we will not have to make an ordinance revision and pay the codification costs and those things. So keeps it clean.
I'd like to entertain a motion with a potential wave of the second reading.
They'll move, Ellis.
Second, Spiegelberg.
Waive in the second, are you going to wave?
We're waving the second.
I am reading, I'm waiving the, and the second reading.
Second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Kavieski.
Just a quick legal question for attorney. If, if we go down the recommended road, we're basically following state statute moving forward to ensure compliance?
Yes, sir.
Does that give up any rights that we may want to retain in this particular category?
No, sir.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Next up, consider act on resolution 21 dash R 2939 awarding the John and Lavinia Rockwell Park Design Engineering Services. Mr. Fry.
Remember my glasses. Thank you. I'm thrilled that this item's here tonight. And, you know, when you look back real quick, it was August of last year that, you know, the settlement agreement came to the common council to start looking at the potential of obtaining a property. And, you know, here we are today and we're discussing the RFPs for the design for that park. So I think this thing has moved at a, at a very good pace and it's good to see that it's moving forward. So what I'm referring to is obviously is the parcels at 517, 525 North Lake Road. And the 517 was purchased through community funds in order for that to become a park. We recently combined both of those lots into a single parcel for it to be a park. We put out an RFP to hire a design engineering firm that could come in and assist the city in designing the park and putting together a plan that could go forward and eventually get constructed. So as part of our process, we did the RFP, sent it out to about 20 firms. Six of them had supplied a response. Following our procedure, we reviewed them for their technical scores. There was a group of five of us that had done that. And after that round of review, there was only one of the six that didn't obtain the minimum 80% of the points. And so the next step is that we open up the cost envelope. And we do this to be in complete fairness to all the firms. We don't know what their cost is when we're reviewing their technical. So once the cost envelopes are open, we rank them. And the top two ranked firms were less than a point different. And neither Craig, I wrote his name up here, I usually call him John, but his name is Craig. We hadn't worked them with those firms in this capacity. So it was, S E H was the number one ranked and then Stormwater Solutions Engineering was the other. So we interviewed both of them. And after that, we tallied up their score points. And S E H is the top-ranked firm and they are the firm that we are recommending tonight. We did a not-tick-seed proposal that took the project all the way through construction. And, you know, in hindsight, that probably wasn't the best for us to do. I know why we did it, but, because one of the things we're asking for them to do is to help us design a park. But then we want them to give us a cost to construct something that they don't know what the design is. And so whenever you do something like that with any firm, they're going to get conservative on their cost. And so in looking at the task, we're able to break this out. There was 12 total tasks in the RFP. And we're talking about just doing task 1 through 7. So what that'll do is that they'll come in and there's three, four key components to the, the first seven tasks. And so the first one is that they're going to have a meeting with what we refer to as the Design Committee. So this was members from the community groups that worked in the fundraising that then talked about some of the thoughts of what the park design should be. But also with the Park and Rec Board. You know, this is a, going to be a city park and that should be the first group that looks at this and has some input on it. So they'll have a meeting with those two groups. The next meeting then is then to sit down with both the Park and Rec Board and Committee of the Whole. Because we also recognize that the common council should have a big say in this. So this puts everybody in the room and they can talk about their thoughts and what the park should be. Because right now, it's a blank slate. Well, there's a house on there, pretty soon it'll be a blank slate. So then they'll take that and do a public information meeting. And that's our way of getting the information out to the public so they can see what we've been working on. And all these other meetings that we're talking about are public meetings. People can come and attend and listen to them. So they'll do the public information meeting. And then they'll come back to the common council for the council to vote on the final plan. Because, you know, the council is the one that provides the reapproval for that. So that's task 1 through 7 that we're going to ask them to do. So what we get out of this is we'll have a, you know, an approved plan or the process brings us to an approved plan that the council's voted on and we're looking to have that done by the second meeting in June. Which does a couple of things. It allows for people during the summer to know what's going on there and start talking about it and hopefully get as excited about the project as we are. But we don't know where we're going to be with money. I mean, we, we can talk money questions tonight, you know, is this going to be in the budget? Is it not in budget? We don't have those answers. I don't have those answers tonight. So we're asking to do the task 1 through 7. So fortunately, we have enough funds that were raised when the community went out and did the 1.35 million fundraiser to purchase the property. There's an additional $53,000 in that fund that's available for use. And so when you look at the cost for S E H for task 1 through 7, even factoring in the 10% contingency brings in just over $51,000. So we're very confident that this project, the design part of it, task 1 through 7 will be able to be completed and back to the council in June to get a, an approved plan voted on. And then after that, because now we'll know what the plan looks like, we'll have an idea what the costs are. And then we can also then get another estimate from the design firm to take it through to bidding, if that's the way the council goes. So we're here tonight wrecking, recommending S E H for task 1 through 7 at a not-tick-seed cost of $51,135.
We also have Mr. Hepner here. So if you have any questions either for Craig or for Mark, they're here to answer any questions.
I just have.
Yeah. Alderman Rogers.
I just want to, so this first 51K-ish is going to be covered by monies that's already there from donations and fundraising. But there's nothing coming out of city budget immediately.
Correct.
To have all this, at least 1 through 7, looked at to give us a stronger direction.
Yes, that's correct.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, and I had a question. Hopefully I didn't dismiss this. But it says, and it, you know, it lays out the shoreline restoration, the portages between the lakes, potential sale of the house, specifically those first couple, the shoreline restorations and the portage between the lakes. Like those were like the things we were looking at for this area. I mean, that's, that was what I, I mean, I, I got the impression from the councils were like the main functions of what we were looking at for the new park. And so I'm just wondering, are those, I mean, those are like, should be like the, the most basic features that are associated with the park. And are, is that going to be part of the RFP? And so that's, I'm sorry if I just missed that. If you've covered that.
No, no, you, no, you did not. And, and thank you for bringing that up. So we all know the, the $150,000 budget number. So when we knew that 525 was going to be obtained by the Hero family and donated to the city, we budgeted $150,000. And that estimate came from a previous estimate when we were looking at that parcel many years ago. And part of that was shoreline restoration. We also have, understand that there's a great desire for a portage in between the two lakes. And when we're looking at, you know, the funds that we have available based on some estimates, those things could fit into that $150,000. We also bid out the house in two ways. One, to see if we could find somebody that would be interested in purchasing it and moving it, which in the long run turned out to be a very significant expense. And so for that reason, because we had two very, very interested parties that worked very hard, had offers in on parcels in order to move this house to. So they were doing all their due diligence. End of the day, it was just too expensive, which is unfortunate. So now we're going to have to look at a process. So we also, at that same time, we're bidding out having it raised. And so we do have a bid for that. We have not brought that bid forward because there's tenants in the house yet and we have not completed the asbestos testing. And we want to complete the asbestos testing and have that number when we come back to the common council. So that'll be coming up shortly, I do believe. So the, the house will have to get removed, but right now, that's where we're looking at that $150,000 that we already have in our budget.
Alderman Kavieski.
So I'm, I'm struggling a bit. Again, I, I appreciate the, the effort and the direction. But we, we have, we're, we're now a landlord with, and now you said the, the house potentially has asbestos. So we have a.
We don't know that.
We don't know that.
We just haven't been tested yet.
Right. The $150,000 allocated for the earth and dam and shoreline improvements on 525 is now incorporated into an overall property that is inclusive of 517 because the C S M has been completed and the 525 no longer exists. Neither does 517. And I'm not sure, I've asked a couple of times what address is associated with that and how those, that $150,000 gets allocated. And now we're, we have in front of us the opportunity to award a design engineering service for 100.
$51,000.
And $51,000 with 53, approximately $53,000 in the kitty that has been raised in excess of the 1.35 million dollars, which would put it at a deficit of what's in the kitty. So I, right?
No.
No?
No. So, so the, the item before you tonight is recommendation to hire S E H for $51,000. I'll give you the exact number because I don't, 51,135.
But the overall bid was $51,000.
There's 53,000 that was raised as part of the community fundraising. So we're looking to use that $53,000 funds for that part of the study. The 150, we're talking shoreline, we're looking at the portage and, and raising of the house.
None, none of that 150,000 is going to be spent until we figure out what things cost. And we need the design to figure out what those things cost and those estimates, which will then come back to council for your approval or disapproval.
Yeah, none of the items that I talked about tonight that are outside of the study can go forward without council approval. But everything's going to come back through common council. You know, we're going to, you know, bring in the people that know what they're doing when it comes to the design of a park. Like I told the Park and Rec Board, I build streets. I would just pave the two parcels is, is what I would do.
That'll be in the news tomorrow.
Obviously, people want to, want to play there. So, you know, we want to bring in the firms that know what they're doing in this area, get the design, have all the groups that need to be involved work towards that final design and then come out with a product which, you know, and, and this process we use both on the Thackrey Trail reconstruction design and also for the Collins Street parking lot. So I think it's, it's worked out well that we're able to bring all the parties together that should be talking about it, you know, the Park and Rec Board, Design Committee, Common Council. And then also getting it out to the public so they understand what we're doing. And then having it come back to the common council for a final vote. So I think this is a great process and I think we, you know, like I said, the recommendation is to move forward with it.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Since we're talking about the costs of this in the design and obviously that, the design will mean that the house is gone in some way. And you've touched on that the, you know, sale of the house for a couple of different parties potentially would not go through. Have we then now considered repurposing, selling aspects of this home to recoup some of the expenses of the, either of the park or the design?
Well, more than likely when we're coming back and we're going to be talking about the demolition of the house, we're going to be discussing a recommendation to probably move forward with like Habitat for Humanity versus trying to get into the sale and manage all of that. And when does someone come in and did they wreck something else? And we thought that, that gave everything in the house that could have another life the ability to do that through an organization that isn't out to make profit on that. So that was our thought of being able to empty the house of anything reusable before we tear it down. And I'm sure police and fire would love to have a couple of training events in there.
There is some beautiful woodwork in that house though that I'm not sure if Habitat for Humanity would use some of that antique, beautiful woodwork.
And, and once that's gone, you know, Bob and I worked on the three houses that were taken down for the community center. So there are, you know, we'd look to, you know, instead of opening up for a lot of people to come in and say, I just want this and I just want that, someone to come in and say, I'll pull all the trim. You know?
Thank you.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, I just want to seek clarification on kind of what I asked to begin with. So like with the shoreline restoration and the portage between the lakes, is that going to be part of the RFP design? Is that going to be included like that? As in the portage between the lakes is going to be part of the design? We'll decide eventually, but is that what we're, we're asking for from the RFP? Does that make sense or no?
So in, in the RFP, we noted that those are projects that the city would like to try and look to move forward with earlier in advance. Because through this process, it won't be till late in the year before someone can do there. But, you know, one of the things once we saw, once I saw some of the design thoughts that came into that, I'd love to work with the firm to say, what should this look like? We can take on this project and we can get it done now while they're going through the design. But it might be good to have some idea what they think the shoreline should look like. That shoreline's in very bad shape, everybody knows that. We're looking, you know, my initial thought is that it should look something like what's behind the community center right now. That type of a thing. And then we would have to set the structures that would act as the canoe and kayak for the portage.
I got it. Okay.
Any further questions or questions for Mr. Hepner? He's kind of getting away free back there.
His name is Craig.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little, I'm a little worried, you know, and I voiced this at the Park and Rec Committee. I mean, in terms of the backwards way, I feel like we're proceeding in terms of we don't really know what the council wants yet and what the council, and not just the council, but, you know, who we represent, the citizens. And I worry that we're not, we're not establishing that transparency and definitiveness for the, the company that we're going to be hiring to do this. I mean, we're still going to have to hash that all out together at some point.
Well.
And we're going to have to work through that. And, and that's why we're only doing the 1 through 7 as opposed to the whole, you know, the whole package. All 12 tasks, right?
So we're only doing task 1 through 7 right now. That's all we're looking for the approval. But task 5 does bring both the council and the Park and Rec Board together. I mean, if we sat here tonight and, and went around the room and said, what do you think this park should look like? I'm hoping everybody says pave it, so I don't look foolish. But, but that's not going to happen. So let's bring in the group that knows what they're doing and, and can sit down and discuss. in the group that knows what they're doing and can sit down and discuss the ideas because, you know, you don't want to take apples and put it with oranges and mix it in with some grapes. You want something that's going to work as a park, the way that everybody thinks. And I do believe that, you know, you put them in the room, you let them chair the meeting and get people's thoughts and ideas, is that we're going to work through and come up with a plan that everybody can be supportive of and move forward with. So it's difficult to get to that point. You can't be at that point before you start the process, unfortunately. That's where you need to bring in somebody that does this for a living to assist us in coming up with a plan that's very feasible and usable for that area.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I feel like this is a good step forward in this process, and I feel that there are enough fail safes along the way to catch us as far as, you know, expenses, rechecking on the design. And there are plenty of opportunities for us to be able to all drill down on that and come up with a really good project and cost effective as well.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Thank you.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Nay.
Alderman Rogers.
Nay.
And to consider Act on Ordinance 21-01, excuse me, 01008, to repeal and recreate 21.043B pertaining to public swimming facilities. Mr. Heppner, we got you up there.
Good evening. Mark made me a name tag, so I don't forget that my name's Craig.
You know who you are.
It's nice that a streets guy could actually do a park job. Thank you, Mark. Tonight, we're doing what I'll call is just some simple cleanup of ordinance language. This comes from our Lake Access Task Force, in which they recommended some different things. They went to the Parks and Recreation Board, and they approved it, and we're forwarding it on to the council tonight. This one in the past had listed nine different properties as a public swimming facility. So we did a couple of things. We removed four of them, which I'll tell you in a second which ones they were. We also got the names of these correct, and they were listed like City Park, which you don't really have City Park, it's City Beach Park, and just cleaned up some of the language. But there's four properties, which is Chestnut Street, Locust Street, Grove Street, and Greenland Ave, which are not swimming facilities. The other ones, we do put swim buoys at, and this year we'll be adding swim buoys to follow. So we do have five different locations. You can call them swim areas or beaches. But so basically removing those four, mostly for safety and there's a lot of either motorboat traffic or just bad access to those spots. Doesn't mean you can't swim in the lake wherever you want. That's up to you. But as a city, I think it's important that we promote safe swimming facilities. So that's really the changes we made, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Kavieski.
I just wanted to say publicly, I appreciate the effort that went into this. This comes up on occasion, depending upon the use at some of these specific locations, and as a city continues to grow. So I appreciate Alderman Shellpepper, as well as members of Park and Rec who've dedicated some time to this, as well as some of the members of the public to provide that input. And I'm in support of this, and I appreciate the time.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, I'll also go on the record and say that I, you know, support the changes. I don't think we're restricting swimming access. I think we're just deciding where we want to promote it responsibly. And so that's what I see us doing with this change. And it's just, where do we want to have swim buoys? Where do we want to have children swimming? You know, Locust and Chestnut are both, they both have heavy boat traffic. There's, there's piers that are there that where the boats are docked and moored. And so I just think it's a common sense thing. We have a lot of other great venues, Park Street, Woodland, Bender, City Beach, where they're all the appropriate swim facilities. And so this is the right, the right thing to do tonight.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Ellis.
You also have the option to waive the second reading.
And I want to waive the second reading.
Shellpepper, second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Thank you.
And to consider Act Lac La Belle Pure Agreement between Park de Lac La Belle, Eagles Landing, and the city of Oconomak.
That'll be me.
Attorney Riffle.
So for those of you that own lakefront property, you'll be familiar with the fact that riparian rights are sometimes difficult. Deciding where your right on your property goes out into the lake begins and ends, as opposed to your neighbors, is a difficult thing. So many times, property owners try to work that out themselves. In this particular case, when Eagles Landing and the park condos were going up, the two property owners met with one another and tried to work that out, and they did work it out. The problem was the map that they put together didn't match up with their legal description. And so it turned out that, as a result of that, the park actually was onto our riparian rights by our beach by about 10 or 12 feet or something like that. And when it was discovered between Park and Newman, Eagles Landing, it turned out that Newman would have to rotate his pier in a way that would be able to be, fall within their legal description. It would create a little bit of a problem for him, but it also created, this whole situation created a problem for Park that they were squeezed down. Now, they had X number of slips. I think it's nine. If we would have insisted on their legal description being put into place the way it was under that agreement, they'd lose like two or three slips. We are not totally without a little bit of fault in this, in that they consulted the city at the time, and the city, I think, put together, we assisted in dealing with the, you know, the description, the plat map that was put together. So we took a look at this thing. We tried to bring all three parties in, and I know you've heard some of this before. And finally, 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 we've got what you have in front of you that is 100% agreed upon and rubber stamped by the engineer that is appropriate. We are giving up a little bit of space in our riparian zone, but according to Craig, it will not create a problem operationally for us at all. I think that the idea coming, you know, from us is be a good neighbor. It's not going to create a problem for us at all in terms of where we put our peers. And thank the Lord that they have now gotten together, because I don't even want to go into it, okay? So I recommend that we approve this. We put it to bed for once and for all, and it will not be a problem anymore.
Any questions? Alderman Shellpepper.
Veterans Memorial Park, how is this going to impact the view from there? I mean, I know that the, you know, the people that helped get that going, Kurt Schreng and Matt Dorn, I mean, they're very concerned, and I share those concerns.
No, no, I understand.
About impacting the view of the Veterans Memorial Park.
From the very beginning, that was always taken into account. The parties did try to discuss with the city the possibility of working into that riparian zone. Nothing will change in that regard, nothing. It's all to the west of that, all, 100%. The line is the same between Veterans Park and Eagles Landing.
Like to entertain a motion? Oh, one, just one moment.
When you say a little land, how much land are we giving up?
We're not giving any land up.
Or how much rights are we giving up?
About four feet. Is that about right, Craig?
The line is about four more feet out to our property, but Park is also shrinking their pier by about five or six feet. So last year, our transient dock boat and their boat were probably too close to each other, so that's going to shift them east and actually alleviate the problem. So besides us giving, the riparian rights is probably what it was last year, it's just on paper now. So they're actually doing some concessions as well.
Thank you. Like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved, Ellis.
Mulder, second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
And to staff reports, Mr. Chabotuski.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Just a quick update here that, reminding you that the strategic planning, the survey for the update that's going to be coming out tomorrow at some point, so please just be on the lookout in your email for that. We have about a week and a half to go through that and complete the survey and get it submitted back. So just wanted to give you a heads up.
Any further staff reports? Captain, anything? Thank you. And to reports and comments from Alderman, any Alderman? Alderman Ellis.
Yeah, I'm going to like this. This is really good. I was driving the other day, and I was thinking to myself, we've got such a rich community here of individuals over the age of 70, 80, 90. Do we have any people that are 100? And I think they need to be noticed. And I was watching, you know, we all watch television and on, what is that? The Today Show, I think it is, where they go ahead and they look at those people over 100 years old. Well, we have one, as a matter of fact. Her name is Violet Frederick. On March 22nd, 1921, she was born. And she's part of my district. And one of the things that I think I'm going to do going forward is I'm going to, and this is something we all can do, as a matter of fact, look at our districts and find those individuals and something special about them, and then bring that out. So in this case, she's turned 100, and I felt as though it'd be best, I would like to bring that to council. I know she's not here, but I know Wayne is here. So Wayne, why don't you come on up here? And I'll just read this. "On this important birthday, as you're looking back in thought, on all the lovely memories your 100 years have brought, it is with great pleasure to send you best wishes and warmest congratulations," you can tell your mom this, "on your occasion of your 100th birthday, which is March 22nd, 1921." This is a certificate from us councilmen and women, and so congratulations.
Anything else, sir? Good? Alderman Kavieski.
So I have a prepared statement. I'm just kidding. It is election day, and I just wanted to thank everyone here in the city and around, around the state and around the country for casting their vote. Local elections are incredibly important, and I think this year we'll see that in the vote totals and participation. I truly appreciate our clerk and your staff as you prepared for and executed the task associated with this, which is a task as a citizen that I take extremely with high importance. It is a right and a duty and an honor that people have died for since the creation of this country. So for all of those who took the time to make that, that honor and that duty and that right and execute that today, thank you very much for that. And lastly, on a, on a, on a fun note, next week, I believe it is Thursday, April 15th, the community is invited to the Oconomak High School in the cafeteria to do a design review, an input session on the skate park. That is going to be at 6:00 PM on Thursday. Hopefully, you'll see some more communication out in regards to that, the excitement associated with that project, as well as the park at 517 in this community has got a buzz, and that's kind of fun to be a part of. So hope to see a lot of people out there to take a look at what's been designed thus far and what input there is to make it even better. So that is all.
Other comments from Alderman? We'll move on to, can I make sure I missed anybody? We're good? On to comments from the mayor. I have a proclamation, annual proclamation to read. "Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable source, resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for the fires, and countless other wood products. And trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, Oconomak has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 27 years and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Robert Magnus, mayor of the city of Oconomak, do hereby proclaim April 30th as Arbor Day. In the city of Oconomak, I urge all citizens to support efforts to plant and care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city communities forestry program dated today, the 6th of April, 2021. With that, I have no further comments for council as your mayor. I wish everybody a great week. Thank you all. I entertain a motion to adjourn."
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Ellis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for everyone.